The authors are ready. And the first bill that I have, it would be Bill Number 94 and Recognize Senator Respejo.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Good morning and good morning colleagues. I move that we place Bill 94-32 as substituted by the Committee on Health and Human Services and Health Insurance Reform Economic Development and Senior Citizens in the Voting Factory. Some more discussion.
You may proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 94 is an act to amend certain sections of the Department of Payment Requirements for Healthcare and Health Insurance Companies as well, from 45 calendar days to 30 calendar days for those billings that received a clean claim filed in writing. And what this bill does, it builds on all of our efforts in the past and in the present to do whatever necessary to not only help the Guam Memorial Hospital, this will not only help the new hospital that's going to come online next year, this, Madam Speaker, most importantly helps all of those doctors and all of those medical clinics who struggle daily to make their payments only because payments that they're expecting from health insurance companies in most cases lag far more than the 45 days currently provided in the current statute. And so, we had a public hearing on this bill, and I have to say for the record that the health insurance companies certainly oppose this piece of legislation and it's to no one's surprise if their issue is cash flow versus the kind of claims that they have to process. I like to think that it really is because of the kind of claims that they have to process and that's why I'm very grateful with the leadership of Senator Rodriguez and his committee. We've amended the bill, not only to reduce it from 45 days to 30 days, the original bill was 21 days, as you know, but we've always kept sight on differentiating a claim versus a clean claim and that's the focus of how these claims are to be processed. And so, there was also discussion, Madam Speaker, maybe if we go to 30 days that we just limited to 30 days from clean claims that are submitted by way of e-billing. But again, I'm thankful that Senator Rodriguez agreed to just not differentiate between an e-billing or a paper billing and just make it 30 days, period. This certainly will set a higher standard for our government to make payments to the hospital and all the other clinics that provide services for MIP patients. And it's a great start to recognizing just what we should do as a government to not only pay these things within these required timelines, but also force the health insurance companies to do the same. Madam Speaker, at that public hearing, one health insurance company, I'll say it because it's been public already, Cabo Select Care said that they're not owing any money to the Guam Memorial Hospital. And if you recall, we had a law that requires every two weeks, the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority to post on their website those insurance companies, including the MIP program, how much they're owing to the Guam Memorial Hospital and how much the Guam Memorial Hospital is expecting to receive as by way of receivables from these companies who have their subscribers going to the hospital and then submitting a claim thereafter. After Cabo Select Care said they don't owe GMH anything, I was not buying into that. And so, I wrote a letter to the hospital administrator and he confirmed that they're at least owing $3.2 million. And Madam Speaker, there was some back and forth, productive back and forth between the Guam Memorial Hospital and this health insurance company, and certainly that matter has been resolved. And I'm very grateful for the kind of dialogue that the two of them engaged in in order to get that number down. And so, Bill 94-32 certainly builds on what this legislature is trying to do for our healthcare industry, both public and private sectors, and I ask all of our colleagues to please support this piece of legislation. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Mike Siniklis, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of Bill 94-32 and I'm also grateful to be listed here as a co-sponsor. In the public hearing, one of the things that was made clear by not only the insurance companies, but also the service providers was that in many cases, they do in fact pay much shorter than the currently prescribed 45-day period under law. But there's a reason why setting the period from 45 days down to 30 days is very important and I would like the opportunity to talk about that today. In the private sector, when you are buying things in order to use them for your business or to resell them as a normal course of business, the place that you're buying from has payment terms. And those payment terms are usually broken down over time periods. Usually, the payment terms are over 30 days, 60 days, or 90 days. They're called net 30, net 60, or net 90. And what these payment terms symbolize is how quickly the vendor who is providing the product needs to get paid from the person who's purchasing it. And if you are able to get payments within 30 days for the products that are being sold, usually you give your best prices. And anytime it goes beyond 30 days, the prices get higher and higher and higher. What we found out in the public hearing is not only does the healthcare industry also go through the same timelines in terms of purchasing, but they also have what's called a net 15, a 15-day timeline, which is an even better pricing timeline. And so, what this bill will do is it will narrow the timeline for health insurance companies to remit payments to doctors for the claims that they file. And right now, under current law, that timeline is as long as 45 days. And what does that mean when it comes down to costs for our people? What it means is if a doctor files a clean claim to an insurance company and they don't get the payment for that claim until 45 days later, that means that all the medical supplies they used in the course of treatment for that particular billing won't be able to get paid until they receive that payment from the insurance company. And if they get that payment in 45 days, but the cost of the product is priced on a net 30, net 60, or net 90 day period, then what's happening is it's causing our medical service providers to be having to go on payment terms that are longer than 30 days. And in the end, what that means is that our medical service providers are having to pay more for the supplies and materials, the medicine, because they're getting the payments remitted later and they're not able to make the payment within the 30-day timeline. A lot of our medical service providers, because they understand that the payments under the current law will come in later than 30 days, they build up cash reserves in order to be able to make their 30-day timeline and then they wait the extra 15 days for the money to come in. But when you're talking about medical service providers building up cash reserves and having that money sitting there because they're waiting for payments to come in from the insurance company, those cash reserves, if they were able to be deployed in other areas, would expand services to our people. And so, what this bill does is two things. One, it reduces costs to our people and to our medical service providers by tightening up the schedule with which payments will be remitted from the insurance companies to the medical service providers. And by tightening up that schedule, we'll be able to get payments out in 30 days instead of 45 days to the vendors that are supplying the supplies and materials that the medical service providers are having to purchase. Getting that purchased within a shorter time period will result in lower prices for the supplies and materials that our medical service providers need in order to be able to help our community. And so, by getting lower prices on that end, they'll be able to pass on those lower prices to our consumers, or they'll be able to reinvest in their practice and improve the services that they have to offer. The second benefit is that by narrowing down from 45 days to 30 days is the need for those cash reserves that those medical service providers keep in order to be able to make their payments on 30 days while they're waiting for the other 15 days to lapse to get the payment from the insurance companies, they'll now be able to deploy more of that cash reserves, again, to reinvest in their practice, to grow the available medical services that our people will be able to avail themselves of. And so, this bill, I think, is a very good bill because in the end, what we're doing is we're tightening up the schedule of which money's going to be flowing from insurance companies to medical service providers, and from those medical service providers to the vendors who they buy their supplies and materials from. It will result in lower prices to our people and will also result in likely the expansion of more medical services due to the greater availability of timely payments and the ability to tap into these cash reserves that they've established based on this 45-day timeline. So, I'm very grateful to the author for constructing this piece of legislation. I believe that it'll be a win-win across the board and in the end, I believe the insurance companies will win as well. Because what will happen is as costs drop, not only the cost for supplies and materials, but the cost to provide medical services, as all those things come down, it in the end results in lower costs for the insurance companies because they'll be having to make lower payments, lower remittances to the medical service providers because the cost of supplies and materials will drop, the cost of medical services will drop, and if medical services expand, they'll be able to perhaps attract more people into their insurance businesses as our medical community grows and develops and becomes even more attractive for our people to avail themselves of. So, I'm very grateful for the author for introducing this piece of legislation and including me as a co-sponsor, and I rise in full support of Bill 94-32. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, are there any others who would like to speak on the motion, there being non-Sentator Respejo, which would like to close? Okay. On the motion to send Bill 94-32 to the third reading, file without any objections, so Senator Munia Barnes, on Bill Number 108-32. Bill 157-32, Senator Tomata, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I actually have a substitute bill to what was introduced. And so, I would like to move that Bill 157-32, as further substituted by the author, be accepted for purposes of discussion. Now, a copy of the substitute bill is being made right now and should be...
Yes, we'll take a brief recess.
It's really a simple amendment. It's a simple amendment. Initially, when the bill was...
One second. So, the bill that you're asking us is to accept is a bill that has been substituted?
Yeah, it's... The clerk has a copy of it there.
The bill that I have in the committee report is as introduced, but what you're presenting to us is an amendment or a substituted bill?
It's a substitute bill. And it should show on the upper left-hand corner, Bill Number 157-32, C.O.R., as further substituted by the author on the floor.
Okay, so to accept this version, no objections, so ordered on your motion then to place?
Thank you. Madam Speaker, right now, as currently...
Motion to place now?
Oh, motion to place Bill 157 as substituted, be placed in the third reading and I'd like to discuss it.
You may proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 157-32 as substituted is really a simple bill. Initially, when it was introduced, I had intended to make the provisions of this bill applicable to all of the autonomous agencies. But in this case, the one that, the agency that really requested this, for this provision, was the Port Authority of Guam. So, several of the autonomous agencies have come back and they said, "Well, you know, the provisions of this bill will be contrary to their bond covenants." And so, then we went back and we substituted the bill so that it really only provides the provisions of Bill 157 just to the Port Authority of Guam. Now, basically, what Bill 157 does is it recognizes that in the case of the Port Authority of Guam, it generates its own revenues from the tariffs that it charges its customers. And so, from those tariffs, it then is able to purchase equipment and supplies. And it certainly seems logical that if then, when the equipment becomes surplus, or the supplies, the non-expendable supplies that they have are excess to their needs, that then they dispose of that and get the highest value that they can get from that disposal. The current law right now requires that although it was purchased using the tariff revenues that were generated, the sale of those, the proceeds from the disposal of this equipment goes into the general fund. So, what Bill 157 proposes to do then is basically to take the proceeds from the disposal and have it revert back to the Port Authority of Guam, the agency that purchased the equipment. And they can then use the funds to further either purchase additional equipment or for the operations and maintenance of other existing equipment. We do however, make a provision in here that of the total proceeds from the disposal, 90 percent of that would go back to the Port Authority of Guam, and 10 percent of the total proceeds shall be deposited into the Guam Procurement Advisory Council Support Fund. It is an existing account and that fund is to be administered in accordance with Section 5906 of Chapter 5. And so, then basically, there's a source of funding there that will be able to assist the Procurement Advisory Council to further the work of maintaining and updating our procurement law. So, that, Madam Speaker, is really the gist of the Bill 157 as substituted. Thank you.
You're welcome. On the motion, Senator Mike Siniklis, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I appreciate the substitute version of the bill as proffered by the author with respect to specifying that this will apply specifically to the port as opposed to all other autonomous agencies and public corporations of the government. You know, I look at this piece of legislation and I have some concerns with it. My primary one is that, you know, oftentimes throughout the course of business in this body, we try to figure out ways that we can get our autonomous agencies to contribute back to the government of Guam. They have their own operations, they have their own funding streams, but they still also avail themselves of many government services that help to support their mission. But at the same time, these autonomous agencies, they don't pay any taxes. We even took away the pilot charge, the payment in lieu of taxes in order to make sure that we were lowering the cost of our services provided by these autonomous agencies. But in the end, these autonomous agencies are still semi-instrumentalities of the government of Guam. And I always look at our autonomous agencies, I'm very proud of the work that they do. They do very excellent work, high-quality work. But I see, what I've seen in the private sector, when I was working in the private sector prior to coming to the legislature, is that the autonomous agencies, they get treated very differently from the line agencies of the government of Guam by the private sector, particularly in the areas of procurement. And that's because autonomous agencies are regarded for their great cash positions and their ability to make payments on time when it comes to the procurement of the items that they need. And so, oftentimes, our autonomous agencies get the best prices in the private sector because they are the best payers. They get the best prices when compared to all of our other government entities. And autonomous agencies who do a very good job of managing their money well and maintaining that reputation are able to get a lot of good supplies and equipment and replace the old stuff that they have with new stuff on a very good schedule. Usually, for example, if you buy a computer and it has a useful life of five years, you depreciate it over those five years, and then after you fully depreciated it on your books, you buy a new computer and you survey out that old computer as surplus. And that five-year-old computer may still be very, very good, but from an accounting perspective, it has no more value, and from a buying perspective, there is reason to go out and buy a new computer to replace that five-year-old computer. The issue is that because our autonomous agencies have a lot of resources and they're able to procure new supplies and equipment based on those schedules, oftentimes, they're surveying out stuff that is still in very, very good condition. But it is, it makes sense for them to survey it out and to go out and buy new stuff because it fits in with their overall financial plan and it keeps them modern. And so, it's a very, very good thing that they're able to stay on top and stay modernized by going out and procuring what they need based on the depreciated useful life of the assets that they have. But the reality is that just because something has depreciated from an accounting perspective doesn't mean that it's actually lost its value. And oftentimes, something that is going to be replaced is still actually very, very usable. And when you fully depreciate an asset and you go out and you sell it because you're going to go out and buy a new asset to replace it, that asset that you're selling because you fully depreciated the value gets sold for a small fraction of what it was originally worth. And that price that you get for that fully depreciated asset oftentimes doesn't reflect the use value of the asset. For example, if you buy a desk, you depreciate the desk, you go out and you sell the desk, the desk could still be very, very usable and it would be fine to go ahead and replace it from an accounting perspective, but the value that you're going to get in exchange for selling that desk versus the actual use of that desk, you know, it's just not equitable. And in the original iteration of the bill, when I was thinking about all the autonomous agencies, I was thinking about how all of these agencies will then be surveying out items that would still be very, very useful in other agencies throughout the government of Guam. And the two agencies particularly that came to my mind was our Department of Education. You know, I had the privilege of working as a teacher for a short period of time and that's a very, very special kind of job. I tip my hat to teachers because it requires a very, very talented and skilled individual to be able to manage all the different facets of teaching. But when you walk through our schools and you see the equipment and the supplies that they're using, it's far older than its useful life from accounting standards. You know, they have computers that are eight, nine years old, or they have desks that are 10, 12 years old. They have shelves that are older than we can even imagine. And then, the second group that I thought of was our mayors. And I've walked through our mayor's offices, Madam Speaker, and I invite every member of our community to go and actually visit your mayor's office, but this time when you go there, look around and see the equipment that they have. Because if there's anything older in terms of equipment than the DOE equipment, it's perhaps our mayor's equipment. And so, when I was looking at this bill as it was originally drafted, and even as I look at this bill now as it's substituted, I think about how the port is going to be surveying out items, they're going to be selling them, they're going to be recovering the proceeds from them at a fraction of the original value, and the money that they're going to be receiving could go to offset the cost of their operations, but it isn't a true reflection of how valuable that asset would be if it was going to be put to use somewhere else in our government. You know, a seven-year-old, a five-year-old desk, or even a 10-year-old desk at the port is a whole lot better than a 20-year-old desk at the Umati Mayor's Office, or a 20-year-old desk up at Simon Sanchez. And for us now to be surveying out something that those agencies may have been able to look and say, "Hey, you know, that's a whole lot nicer than what I got back in my space." Now, what we're doing is we're just completely extricating that process and the port now is going to be just kind of focusing on its own assets without regard to how those potential assets might actually still have a lot of useful value to other agencies within the government. And so, when I was thinking about all this, I said to myself, "What can we do to try and make the situation such that if the agency is going to be disposing of something and our schools or our mayors still see value in those kind of items, how can we still get them to be able to avail themselves of it?" Because at the very least, you know, with our autonomous agencies to include the port, not paying any taxes, no payments in lieu of taxes, but still availing of government services, still able to take advantage of our municipal bond capacity and go out and issue triple taxes and bonds, you know, our autonomous agencies have a lot of benefits of being a member of this government. And so, as part of this whole government family, autonomous, semi-autonomous, and line agency, at the very least, can we allow for our schools and our mayors to look at the old stuff that they're going to get rid of and say, "Hey, you know, I think I'd like to take that. I could use that. I could probably use that." You know, yeah, you might be getting rid of that shelf because you're having a whole new, you know, a whole new office setup coming in with brand-new cubicles and everything and you might be getting rid of all of your old stuff, but we can all use those things down in our mayor's office or up in our principal's office, or even in our classrooms. And I still would like, I would like for at least our schools and our mayors to still be able to see a manifest of what is going to be disposed of first and to say, "Hey, you know, we can still use that. Can we have it, please?" And I think that that would be a very, a very good thing to do within the perspective of this overall government of Guam family. If the port isn't going to be needing it anymore, if the true return that they're going to get in terms of actual cash is going to be very, very little, and if they haven't been getting that cash anyway, it's all been going to GSA, I'd like for our schools and our mayors to be able to get a look, see, and figure out whether or not that's something they may be able to use. Because even if it's old, it might not be as old as a lot of the really, really old stuff that they're having to make do with. So, I would like to, at this time, offer an amendment. It was originally drafted, Madam Speaker, on the previous iteration of the bill, so if I may be afforded a minute to make copies and circulate to the members?
Okay, we're going to take a minute recess.
The legislature's back in session. Senator Snickers, you have an amendment.
Yes, Madam Speaker, thank you. This is to be on page two, line 24, to add a new section A, right under the subsection 5404, that, that, um, that gives this new authority to the port. And it reads, "Prior to any proceedings to dispensive surplus supplies or equipment by the Port Authority of Guam, a manifest of all such items shall be provided to the Guam Department of Education and the Mayor's Council of Guam. Any such item determined to be abused within ten business days of receiving the item manifest by GDOE or MCOG shall be surveyed from the Port Authority of Guam to GDOE or MCOG at no cost. With respect to the administration of this provision, GDOE shall have the right of first refusal on any such items." And this provision, Madam Speaker, will basically say, okay, if the port's going to survey items out, if they're going to dispose of them, first put together a list, send it to DOE, send it to the Mayor's Council, they can take a look at the list and say, and, and see, okay, are these any items that we might be interested in? And if they are interested in it, they have 10 days to go and let the port know, hey, this is something that we might be interested in. And if they are, um, uh, something that the mayors or the schools are able to put to use, then it'll be surveyed over to them at no cost and they'll be able to actually, you know, continue to make use of the item even if it's being surveyed, even if it was originally going to be considered, um, useless by the, um, by the port. You know, Madam Speaker, there's an old saying, one man's junk is another man's treasure. And while we're not looking to keep junk circulating within the government, um, all you gotta do is go to a typical yard sale, you know, here on the island, and you can see how something that's, that's considered, um, old or, or needed to be removed from somebody's home and to be sold can actually be of value to somebody. They're even willing to pay money to, to go to a yard sale and take what somebody else is looking to get rid of. And, um, you know, taking that, that kind of concept, that kind of mindset, and knowing the realities, the realities of the state of equipment in our schools and in our mayors' and knowing the realities of our autonomous agencies and how they have stuff that may be old and it's time to move out and get rid of them, not as old. Our, our autonomous agencies and the equipment that they have to work with across the board, whether it's vehicles, whether it's desks, whether it's computers, whether it's whatever, are all in much, much better shape than the stuff that our mayors have to work with. And even the stuff that some of our, our, our schools have to work with. And so before we start, um, further compartmentalizing our autonomous agencies and allowing them to go ahead and get rid of stuff that they, within their core mission and their, their, um, um, arena, feel that they don't need anymore and they're able to move out, uh, let's at least get our schools and our mayors to look at it and see whether or not it's something that they can actually put to use in the service of our people. So I'd like to offer this amendment, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
You're welcome. On the amendment. Anyone like to speak? Senator Tomada Irakneis.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, I rise in objection to the amendment for several reasons. First of all, uh, this suggests that, um, that, you know, the autonomous agencies, in this case, we're talking about the Port Authority of Guam, um, that, that they're going to be irresponsible enough and that even though it's still a good desk, uh, it's, it's, it's not a, they want a new desk, so they're gonna dispose of the existing desk so they can get a new desk that now has the pedestals for the computer and whatnot. And quite frankly, I, I just don't see that sort of thing happening. But probably my two biggest concerns are twofold. One, uh, you know, right now, they've, they've got a, um, they've, they've just recently executed a, I believe it was a $10 million or a $14 million loan with Bank of Guam. I, I haven't read the fine print of the, uh, of the, you know, the, the indenture that's associated with that loan, uh, or for that matter with, uh, with, uh, the funds that they've gotten through federal grants. And for the port now to just say, okay, we don't want this anymore, DOE, Mayor's Council, come and take your pick and, and just, you know, and, and take whatever you want here, I have a feeling we're gonna run into problems with that. Uh, and the second thing that I'm concerned about is that a provision like this is really, I'm afraid that it could get abused and it'd be a backdoor way of, you need a desk? Okay, you can take this desk and we'll just buy another one. And then, you need a truck? Okay, here's a truck. We'll buy another one. Uh, and, and so I, I think we need to avoid that sort of thing. If, in fact, the port, you know, was being funded from the general fund, from taxpayer money, then yeah, I can see the reallocation of resources, uh, as is being suggested here. Will certainly be appropriate. But in this case, we're talking about property that is purchased from revenues that are generated from tariffs that are charged to customers who utilize the services provided by the port. And it's gotta be run like a business. So, you know, if, if you've, if you've got a piece of equipment that's, uh, that's obsolete, then get rid of it and get the maximum value and use that to offset the cost of replacement equipment. Now, this idea of, you know, taking this, this, I, I would hope that when, if, if the port is going to dispose of computers or desks, um, that, that it's, it's really, you know, outlived its usefulness, it's obsolete. And so if it's obsolete for them, it's probably obsolete for DOE. And why do we want to continue that? You know, do we want to promote a culture of, you know, hand-me-downs of, you know, you're not good enough for a new, uh, computer that has the, the software that, that will really allow for efficient work, but here's a hand-me-down that's, you know, probably 10 years over its, uh, over its lifetime, and, uh, here's what you work with? You know, if we really value the education, if we really value the services of the Mayor's Council, I think we should, you know, the government should come up and provide them with a budget to get the sort of equipment that they need to be able to work effectively and efficiently. So I, I rise in objection off the amendment, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, Senator Frank Oden.
Thank you very much, and good morning to you and our colleagues, Madam Speaker. You know, I understand some of the, the comments that have been shared in regards to this particular amendment, but I stand in full support of this amendment. And let me explain, Madam Speaker, for, as an individual that has sought supplies and equipment over at GSA, I know that my previous term, that was really the primary focus because I was instructed when I was coming into the legislature after a short interim absence, Madam Speaker, I was instructed that there were very minimal resources available to be able to equip my office. So the one particular location that I had proceeded to was GSA. And I have to extend my kudos to the limited staff and support that they have there because they do a fantastic job. But you know, call it timing in terms of when I had reached out, but, Madam Speaker, for about a timeframe of about three months, I was able to equip my office with no less than five desks and two television sets. All from GSA, items that were previously identified by other agencies saying, we're perhaps replacing this, or this is outdated, this is no longer necessary, we're gonna send it over to GSA so that they can properly dispose of it through the government process. Well, that same concept can be applied here, Madam Speaker, is if in fact, there's an opportunity for DOE to get that extra desk for a teacher, or to get that extra computer that can be refurbished and ensure that it has a continual lifespan of another two to three years, so that the teacher in the classroom, or the students, or the school system can benefit directly from it, then I don't think that this amendment will do any harm. Because all it says is that, by the way, Agency A, if you're gonna identify certain items as excess and you're gonna allow for it to be surplus and sent out to GSA to go through that entire process, you only have one additional step before you transfer all these items over to the GSA or Department of Administration. And that one additional step is you compile your list, which the good sponsor of the, the legislation says has to be approved by the Board of, Board of Directors of the Port Authority of Guam. That entire list, forward it to DOE, forward it to the Mayor's Council of Guam, and say, you have 10 days to be able to respond if in fact, any of these items, of which a few, a few of them still appear to be reusable, that you, your entity, your agency, or the schools, or Department of Education would like to avail themselves of direct transfer of these materials. And Madam Speaker, it's a system, it's one additional step in this whole system. I would prefer if the step was, give it to GSA and then have GSA notify the respective agencies, DOE, and, and the Mayor's Council of Guam, but perhaps in this case, it could be agency to agency, direct transfer. But I stand in support of this because I, my office, by virtue of limited resources and the instructions that I received, we were able to benefit directly from this process, Madam Speaker. And I, I believe very sincerely that because the Port Authority is not only an autonomous agency, they generate the revenues every few years, they do have a turnaround of, of equipment, supplies, and resources, and perhaps a few of them may still be in good usable condition, where DOE as well as the Mayor's Council of Guam can directly benefit from them. So I stand in support of this particular amendment. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On, on the amendment, are there any other speakers? I'd like to invite the author to, the mover of the amendment to close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, it was mentioned in previous conversations that our autonomous agencies need to be run like a business. And that is a good mindset to have because they do need to make sure they're generating the revenue in order to operate and that they're doing it on an ability to self-sustain. But the reality is, when you look at an autonomous agency, its environment that it's able to avail itself of has so many perks of not actually being a private business on this island. They don't pay any taxes. They're able to go out into our bond market and use our bond ratings and our, um, triple tax exempt status to go out and borrow for their projects, and those are all good things. You know, they're able to avail themselves of the benefits of being government entities and they're able to avail themselves of being, of the benefits of generating their own revenue and focusing on their own priorities. And those are all very good things for autonomous agencies. But we cannot just say, let's run it like a business on this side because we don't want to have to go through this extra step and then, and then still have all these government affiliations and say, yeah, we're still also going to avail ourselves of these benefits of being members of the government, but we're not going to, um, take the consideration to seek out our partners in DOE, our partners in the mayors, and ask them, hey, do you want my leftover stuff? I mean, that's all this amendment will do is it will require before the port goes out and sells it to say, hey, do you want our leftover stuff? And, you know, if we were appropriating and if we did have the money to make sure that everybody had the best equipment all of the time, then I wouldn't be introducing this amendment. But the realities are very, very different. In our schools, in every single one of our schools, and in every single one of our mayor's offices, mayor's offices in particular, you know, the mayor's offices that I've visited, I mean, you'd be amazed what they're working with. Absolutely amazed, and yet they still do it. And they do a damn good job in service of our people, even with the desk that's missing a leg being propped up on a, on a, um, filing cabinet where the bottom drawer cannot open. You know, those are the realities out there. And I don't think there's a single desk in the port, there may be, I could be wrong, but I doubt there's a single desk in the port missing a leg being propped up by a filing cabinet with a bottom drawer that can't open. And if they are getting rid of a desk that has all four legs, I'm sure the mayor would love to be able to switch out that one desk that's under, under those particular conditions. And so it's not unreasonable for us to say, hey, can, can the mayors look at it and see if it's something that they could use so that they can, they can have it? Because you're already going to get rid of it anyway. And that's what this amendment seeks to do. Um, the retiring speaker made a very, very good point about his office, and I also wanted to talk about my office. You walk into my office, Madam Speaker, I can count on one hand the number of things that I had to purchase to get my office set up. I have one, two, three, four, five, I have six desks in there. None of them were bought. One of them was graciously lent to me by a, a family friend. The other five were all leftovers and were using them. You know? If we, if, if I was, uh, not able to avail myself of those leftovers, then I'd be probably making do with, with an even, an even shabbier working environment. But we've, we've done very nicely. Leftover filing cabinets, leftover desks, leftover tables, conference tables, chairs, all leftovers. So, you know, the idea of creating a culture of hand-me-downs isn't necessarily a bad thing if it's still in good condition, if it can still be put to use for our people, and if it can, and if it can help our agencies, our schools, or our mayors not to go out and spend a dollar for this because instead they can now use the dollar for that, that's a good use of old stuff from one, from one entity being able to be, um, put to good use by another. And so, um, you know, I introduced this amendment in the interest of our school system, in the interest of our mayors, but I also have reservations about it because there are realities, as the author of the, of the substitute bill did speak of, there are realities where we don't want any abuse. And, um, you know, just as this entire substitute bill is calling on the responsibility of the port to be able to do the right thing with the assets that they have, um, we also should, should view this amendment with the idea that we expect the same responsibility from the Department of Education and from the Mayor's Council of Guam, that they're not going to just look at stuff and say, oh, I want this and I want that, just because they can. You know, they need to be prudent about it. They need to make sure that they're not going out there and taking things that they're actually not going to use and allow rust, to rust out in the back. But if the alternative is cut them off entirely from the ability to avail themselves of these things because we are worried about that, I think we need to trust our mayors and our schools a little bit more, that they're, that they're not going to create an even bigger problem for themselves. And if they do, if they do, if this amendment does pass and we actually do see those kind of things happening, we can easily come back and take this amendment, uh, take this section of the law out and say, hey, you know what? We kept the door open for DOE, we kept the door open for the mayors, but you guys didn't do the right thing with the, um, with this consideration that this legislative body gave to you, so we're going to have to make sure that we take that back now. But I think that before we completely close the door on the ability for our schools and our mayors to be able to avail themselves of these things, given what they're already working with, I think that we should at least allow for, for those two entities who I have seen personally working with very, very, I mean, just, just terrible, I mean, it's sad. If we can at least help them out a little bit by keeping the door open for them to be able to take stuff that might still be usable, or at least is better than what they already have, I would very much like to keep that door open. So I humbly ask my colleagues to please support this amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. We have two senators that walked out. I know there was a, an objection on the floor. So, there's exactly eight members here. There's one objection. So, on the amendment, all in favor, please, raise your hand. The amendment failed. On the- On the main motion, Senator Frank Huggins.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in support of the proposed legislation, and I would like to ask for consideration just to add a slight amendment to this measure. It would read on line 21, because obviously, the entire section refers directly to excess supplies and equipment, to read, "The Port Authority of Guam shall not transfer, sell, trade in, or otherwise dispose of supplies and equipment owned by the Port Authority of Guam without the authorization of the Port Authority's Board of Directors." So, I believe that that would be all-inclusive in terms of ensuring that they don't misread, or anyone tries not, does not try to misinterpret the intent of the provision, and it would apply directly to supplies and equipment. So, it would read right after supplies on line 21 to insert the words "and equipment."
On the amendment, no objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
On the main motion, are there any other speakers? Senator Abbott, would you like to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just want to clarify that, of course, it was the port that had requested for this flexibility, because they are in the process of disposing of surplus equipment, such as an old gantry crane, which has already been mothballed, which probably the only value that it has now is for the scrap metal. It's got a rubber-tire gantry that is used to move containers, which they don't use any longer. They also have a couple of inoperative container handling equipment. And, you know, all put together, there is some value to that, nothing to sneeze at, which certainly, if they were able to retrieve some of those proceeds, certainly would be a help to their operating budget. So, I would ask my colleagues to favorably consider this bill. Thank you.
On the motion to send Bill 157-32 to the third reading file, without any objections, We're back to Bill Number 108, Senator Tina Rose Minya-Barnes. Okay, so, when we left off, then Senator Limtiaco was considering amendments, and I think everyone should have a set of amendments. And this is for the bill that has been asked... There. Have Bill 108 with two asterisks as substituted by the committee and further substituted on the floor. If there's anyone who does not have the bill, please let one of our pages know. And so, now, the chair would recognize Senator Mike Limtiaco.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to speak on Bill 108-32, and just voice some of the concerns that I have in relation to it. But prior to that, I just want to speak briefly on the intent of the legislation, in the fact that the impact that it would have on the extending the life of our landfill is significant, and it's definitely worthy of pursuing. However, we need to pursue it in the best way and make sure that our consumers of these potential container beverages that are going to be assessed a certain redemption value and be charged a deposit for it, aren't necessarily subsidizing this program in order to achieve the goal. Now, once again, it's a good thing to extend the life of the landfill. In the long run, it will cost our taxpayers less money, because they won't have to build new cells necessarily, or they won't have to build those cells in a significantly faster timeline if we were to reduce the waste stream that is going into the landfill. However, when I read through Bill 108, I'm concerned with a couple of things. And the first area of concern is on page two, line 17 through 19, in which it describes the deposit beverage container fee and how that fee will be assessed. And I want to make sure that the listening audience knows that we're not just talking about a deposit fee that you issue, and then when you get your bottle and you take it into these redemption centers, you get that full value back. Because what these three lines are suggesting is that, in addition to the redemption rate, the consumers of these recyclable beverage containers are going to have to pay, in addition to the redemption rate, a handling fee, plus the department's administrative costs, none of which are even addressed in the bill. So, the, our public does not even know what those charges are going to be. So, the way that the, now, it does address later on in the bill what the redemption rate's going to be. I think it references five cents, and we'll get to that section of the bill. However, we don't know what the handling fee is, and we don't know what the department's administrative costs are. And so, my concerns are to the point of, if we're trying to create this new program to manage the bottle bill with the very noble intent of reducing the waste stream into our landfill and encouraging recycling, we want to do that, but we don't want to do that by taxing our consumers of these products in order to do it. And so, if, and if we are, we need to let them know what those fees are, and we can't just basically say, this is the formula for the fees, and somewhere down the line, we're going to tell you what it is, because it has an effect on the consumers, and ultimately, the consumers are going to pay for it. You know, the, just consider the costs that go into these, the development of this program. The cost to the retailers to administer their end of the program, getting the required redemption values printed on there. I want to say that we, I don't know if the bill specifically addresses it, but are the handling fees and the department's administrative costs going to be put on those bottles as well? Will the retailers have to be required to put those on the recycling items? The other costs are the costs to sustain the redemption centers. So, basically, this, I understand the bill as the handling fee that's referenced on page two is a subsidy to the redemption centers to handle it, or to accept these recyclable items. And that in of itself, and I'll get to that later on in the bill, that in of itself is ripe for fraud and abuse, because there really is no way to monitor these redemption centers, and there's no way to ensure what they're claiming to EPA as what they've accepted, right? So, for example, if I'm, if I'm, want to participate in this program, and I recycle 10 containers that I can go, take down to the redemption centers to redeem my deposit, the redemption center will take in these 10 bottles, and I think give me some sort of receipt for it, and then they're going to take their copy of that receipt and give it to EPA and say, by the way, Mr. Limtiaco turned in 10 bottles, and so you owe me this handling fee for accepting that. How is that going to work? And to what level are we going to monitor the redemption centers? Are there serial numbers? Are there barcodes of some sort to track all of this? What happens when a redemption center basically manipulates... This person turned in 10 bottles, and turned in 10. How quickly is this program going to succumb to, because of the processes or some sort of controls, which I'm still not sure that this bill addressed the controls in here, and I'd like to hear from the author at one point in time whether or not we've addressed those. But how are we going to control what the redemption centers are going to come back to EPA and say, this is what you need to pay me for my handling fees? And then, on the department's administrative cost side, we don't even have any numbers yet to determine what it's going to cost to manage the program. And I, although I think it's a worthy cause, and we should pursue it, I think we really need to take a step back and really think about some of these issues that we're going to raise in the debate, and I hope that our colleagues also chime in to let their thoughts be known on it. You know, and then there's the cost of the government of Guam to regulate and administer the program, all of which is going to be subsidized in addition to the redemption fee, because it specifically says, "The deposit beverage container fee shall be based on the following formula: redemption rate, which is what the consumer of the product is going to get back; the handling fee, which is a fee that's going to be paid to the redemption centers for handling it; and the department's administrative costs," which, obviously, they're going to need to employ people to make sure that they're monitoring the redemption centers, they're monitoring where these, the deposits will go into, and how that's going to be administered. But we don't know that. We don't even have an inkling or any kind of forecast as to what those department's administrative costs. You know, and so, I'm concerned, because we, although we want to support the program, we don't want to create a bureaucracy that will be generated from, you know, trying to implement the bottle bill. And so, those are my concerns. And it should be pointed out that, you know, if you read some of these bottles, and probably all the bottles that come to Guam don't have all the lists, but, you know, I believe that there's 11 states that have these deposit laws, and at one time, there were more than 40. And I think that's because these other states have probably opted out of the deposit laws, they have mature recycling programs, and there's value to the recyclable items, and they're able to make money by recycling these items, and either turn it into some other raw material that they could further sell to a manufacturer that can reuse the plastic or the glass. And that's why a lot of these states have moved away from these laws, because the private sector has stepped in and taken them over. And so, when we think about that, and we think about the useful product, what can be economically viable or economically feasible to be recycled on Guam, we need to look at the end users, and what do we manufacture on Guam? We don't manufacture anything. And so, when we talk about these recyclable items, most of these recyclable items need to be shipped off the island in order to go to countries that recycle them. So, you know, countries like China and Taiwan and Thailand, they're the ones that are receiving these products to turn them into some sort of manufactured good. And it costs a lot of money to ship this, these products off of the island. So, obviously, we need to be concerned as to which beverage containers that have some sort of feasible recycling opportunity, or economically feasible recycling opportunity, should be assessed these deposits, because we shouldn't be assessing these deposits, these handling fees, and the department's administrative costs on items that cannot be economically feasible to recycle. One, for instance, is glass. Glass is heavy. You can't do anything with it on Guam. There's some commercial applications that are currently not being utilized on Guam, like putting it in the sidewalks, or putting it potentially on asphalt. But that adds cost to the product. It doesn't actually reduce the cost of manufacturing for it. You're just, you're adding it into the, for example, a sidewalk. No concrete company is going to pay you for glass, because it just adds cost into their equation, right? So, that brings us to one of the sections of the bill that I'd like to make an amendment on, and that's on page three, which identifies a list of approved containers.
Senator, before you do, can I just take a quick recess? And I, my apologies to Senator... Because there's a fluctuation in the volume, and we do have the workers here to work on it, and it's going to take some time, so we're going to recess until two this afternoon. And Senator Limtiaco, you will be recognized, and we'll start the clock with you again. We'll recess until two.